I'm going to call this village board meeting for May 20th, 2018 to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Susan Springman, Bill Random, Chris Dunham.
Here.
Phil Lullen.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Dr. Random was on call this evening and got called for a medical. That's why he is not here. Consent agenda, I'm sorry, confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on May 16th. The final revised agenda was published on May 17th at all three village posting locations. The final revised agenda and meeting packet was available online on May 17th. The public hearing notice was published in the Wanakee Tribune on May 2nd and May 9th, and notices were mailed on May 2nd.
Thank you. Okay, first item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
Chris, one quick note. In my supplement to the agenda, you may have noticed there were some specific dates in the recommended motions in the consent agenda that were incorrect regarding the St. John's Church Festival. So, I noted those corrections in the supplement, and I just want to make sure that that's addressed in your motion.
They were also corrected in the revised packet.
Thank you. Okay.
Remove approval of the consent agenda with all the corrections.
Motion by Susan Springman?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Called to question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. I say aye. Public comment, is there anyone here who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? Todd?
One is congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
Aaron graduated from Edgewood. Let's give her a hand. And I have one other, but Adam's way over there, so I'm going to have to come stand at the podium for once.
Oh, my gosh. I know. So, Adam's been with us a short time, but it's felt like a long time. And that's it. That's a compliment. Sounds like it. He, Adam arrived here and took a tough job as HR manager and assistant to me, which itself is a whole another deal. But really, took it and adopted it, and the organization adopted him, which is why it feels like he's been here so long. He's taken some tough projects. For example, when we switched to the HSA, I think it's probably fair to say that some people believe that you would fail at that endeavor to make it work in this organization. And I can tell you that I've had, that there have been employees who, at first, also thought it would fail, but have since come up to Adam and thanked him for the job he did to implement it. And now it's been a positive addition to our organization. So, job well done.
Thank you.
The, so a couple of things for you that I wanted to share. One is a certificate. Now, this isn't the typical certificate we give employees. This one's actually an invoice. So, Adam has a special car that hooks up to electricity, and it hasn't gone without notice that he's been plugging into our building. So, we've added up usage hours per day. There's also, the outlet, by the way, is very close to the employee entrance. So, there is a premium parking fee to go with that. There's a convenience fee that obviously is appropriate, and then there's an Iowa inconvenience fee because he's leaving us for the state of Iowa. This all comes out to $8,800.
Check that out.
I'd like to congratulate you on that, on it.
Did I get a raise, too?
No, but what we did do as a staff, and as a show of our appreciation, now, you worked really hard on the barrels on main project, which wasn't a barrel of fun. You understand that? And Adam enjoyed the project so much that he actually bought one of the barrels and asked for the cost to be deducted from his final paycheck. Well, here's a card from employees, and I can tell you that we took up a collection and we've covered the cost of the barrel for you. So, Adam, job well done. We will miss you. Thanks.
Do I need to sign that?
The invoice. I just want to say thank you. It has seemed like a long time because it has, I think the fit was really good here. And we have gone through a lot with the HSA. But I can tell you something that, at least from a staff perspective, I hear from everyone in the organization, every day. Police, Village Center, utilities, I hear from everyone. And I just want to let you, as a board, know how incredible your organization is at this moment. You have a strong organizational culture. And that's really showing through in things like the morale of our team, the ability for us to recruit. All those things are all really positive for this organization. I see it every day, and I'm not sure that maybe, you know, some don't. But I just want you to know how incredibly honored I have been to work with so many fine folks, and I will miss it here. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Todd. Any other bills? Okay. Approved all that. I just have one thing that I'm just going to share. I was in Washington DC the last five days, and my wife's cousin was promoted to the commanding officer of the Nimitz Operational Intelligence. So, he is behind all of the, if you've heard in the news, the Nimitz, all of our marine maritime. He's in charge of all of it, behind the scenes. So, I got to go into a secure room that all these yellow lines, yellow sirens went off, and nothing can be talked about. Everybody puts away everything they're working on. It's very, very high security. And to see a military thing like that with a promotion is pretty amazing. So, if you ever get a chance for anybody to see something like that, it's pretty cool. So, anyway, so I'll give a shout out to Mike with this. All right. First item we have is our public hearing. Public hearing and discussion action on a request by Kilkeny Farms West LLC to approve a general development plan and rezone from A1 to PUD for Kilkeny Farm West Commercial Center at the southwest corner of Woodland Drive and County Highway Q. Kevin, are you going to introduce?
Chris, we've asked the applicant to make a presentation, and then I think we can follow that up with some staff comments, and you can have a public hearing.
Perfect.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Was, I shouldn't touch it.
Do we have a red pointer for him right off the bat?
I do.
Okay, perfect. All right, good.
Thank you.
Is everyone ready?
Okay.
First off, good evening, board. Grant Ducatch, quick introduction here with Excel Engineering. You're representing the Tierneys and the Kilkeny West General Development Plan, Kilkeny West Commercial Center Development Plan is what we're calling it. So, just going to get into a brief introduction of the project, go through a few high-level engineering items, some stormwater, some traffic, just to advise the board. And we've been working with village staff throughout the past few months on coming together with this plan. Just going to touch on some of the high-level items, and we can open up to any questions. You know, the Tierneys are very excited about the project. It's been a fun project to work on, a lot of planning, a lot of implementation that we've been able to do, and really provide a nice product for the village. So, as I start off here, we have three lots. One larger lot in the north end to be anchored by a grocery, Festival Foods. We have Lot 2, a larger lot for future development, which is slated for mixed-use commercial. And we have a third lot in the southeast corner, which is a C-store with fueling stations. It's comprised of approximately 23 acres of development, and there are public improvements with the public roads. Peaceful Valley Parkway and Lone Sidel Lane make up the majority of the onsite public improvements for development. With that, we've been able to connect to existing infrastructure to the maximum extent practical. The existing roadway network here at Peaceful Valley Parkway and Highway Q is one connection point. The other connection points where there's existing infrastructure is on Holiday and Sausalito that we're connecting opposite for safe and efficient manner at those two locations. We are proposing a three-quarter intersection for Lone Sidel Lane and County Highway Q, which is avoiding conflict. We're offsetting that with the proposed Serra Lane on the east side of County Highway Q. So, we've offset that. You can see a curb here that that can be constructed independently, and traffic will not conflict with the proposed three-quarter intersection across the road. That highlights the main facilities on site. Another item I want to touch on is pedestrian access. We do have full pedestrian access on all of our proposed public roads within the development. There's a 10-foot-wide asphalt multi-use path, which is on the north and east side of the main interior loop road. All other locations have sidewalks. Every street proposed has dual-side pedestrian access, pedestrian ways. So, it's either sidewalk with the main access walking path. Working with staff, we've added a sidewalk on the south side of Woodland so that we have that connectivity on the north side of the project. And we've also implemented an asphalt multi-use path on the west side of Q. We're currently working with staff to find the final location of that, to move it a little closer to the back of curb, so we can eliminate some of the construction costs, make it more efficient product, and more of an equal to what's across the street, which was, I believe, constructed a few years ago. So, with that, we do have pedestrian access throughout the entire facility. And lastly, one of the key items I wanted to touch on that we worked with staff, with planning staff specifically, was to, in the general development plan, add proposed saving berms and planting areas right in the development plan to screen the back of the proposed grocery development, the future residential areas to the west. So, there's going to put, right in the general development plan, it's from an actual proposed condition, working on the project. We're looking at, you know, five to six for berm with dense evergreen and deciduous plantings to really screen the backside of that building. And just another note on that, the Tierneys were very, very adamant about lowering the elevation of this building and the proposed Festival Foods grocery site, so that we could minimize the impact on the residential area to the west. So, we're stepping that down so that the future residential to the west isn't looking up as high at a building. There's a lot of topography on the site, so naturally it does step down, and grade does change. But that's Don's vision, and really it enables us to screen the back of that building as much as we possibly can, given all the topography and grades. With the next slide, Kevin? Next item I want to talk to you and present tonight is stormwater management. Just a brief overview of the stormwater management, what we're proposing on site. And obviously, after this, we can be happy to answer any questions. We're just going to touch on some of those key items that we're doing. The existing site is split into two basins. Approximately 2/3 of the property drains to the east. The existing ridge is about where I have my pointer here. And everything to the south and east of that drains to County Highway Q. There's an existing 24-inch culvert that goes through that. So, we're maintaining those drainage patterns to the maximum extent practical. We're within a half acre, approximately, post-development to pre-development for what's draining to what different area on site. With that, 2/3 of the property drained to County Highway Q. That leaves a big part of the site, which is the north side, and that drains to the northwest into Woodland, and then makes its way to the west and actually drains back down to the southwest through the Tierneys property, is that main drainage facility. So, with that, we're meeting all local, county, and state stormwater standards for stormwater management with the development. By doing that, we have two main facilities, and some of those facilities are treating both public and private stormwater, so we can be as efficient as possible. The first facility is in this location, immediately adjacent to County Highway Q. It is going to be in the vicinity of an existing biofiltration facility that was put in place when Highway Q was expanded. So, that water's now going to be treated by one larger regional facility to provide more, a more efficient design. We have a wet pond and a grass infiltration area, and that grass infiltration area is connected with an equivalent pipe for stormwater. So, when the water comes up, it can go, flow through both sides of the pipe. It's called an equivalent pipe for stormwater. And we're able to maximize that area, leftover area green space, and then that discharges into the existing culvert, which goes under Highway Q. The culvert, it won't be seen anymore. There's going to be a manhole on the end of it as the entire area is going to be raised up. It's not, it's existing ditch section along Highway Q that will be with the walking path. That'll be filled and raised up to be more of an urban section with a walking path. So, you're not going to see the culvert. It's all going to be subsurface stormwater conveyance at that area. Very similar in the northwest corner, we have a wet pond and grass infiltration area. That will take water from the northern third of the property. The public road will drain into that. A portion of the Festival Foods site will also drain into that. That'll be covered with an easement for those public stormwater drainage on private property. Given the topography, we really didn't have an opportunity to split this, and we wanted to be able to create stormwater management the most efficient way possible. So, we combined a portion of the festival site with some of the public improvements. Just want to touch one last item on stormwater management. Stormwater management for Lot 2, the proposed mixed-use, is taking into consideration for up to four acres of impervious surface with the proposed wet pond and grass infiltration area on site. So, that development can be built out and utilize that infrastructure that's going to be constructed now. Lot, yeah, Lot 3, the proposed C-store, will have to be self-sufficient. They will have to provide their own stormwater management on that property. That's an overall layout of stormwater management and how we've sited the site on the development. If you're aware of the private site, there's an existing hill or knoll, as you call it. A lot of that's going to be removed for the project, and we do have quite a bit of fall. The high point is somewhat consistent, but it'll be lowering that 10 to 15 feet so that we can get acceptable grades on the roadway connecting back into Woodland as Woodland drops down as you go to the west as well. So, we're really just balancing it and being able to connect all those different connection points on site. That's a brief overview of the stormwater management, how we've laid out the project. Lastly, I want to touch on traffic. We completed a traffic analysis, a TIA for the project at the request of the village, and just want to highlight on some of those main items from the study that we found, and touch on really the summary that the existing infrastructure is sufficient, is what we found. So, the study area for the proposed traffic impact analysis, or TIA, was the entire Kilkeny West Commercial Development Center, as well as a proposed, about 60 acres, proposed single-family residential, 60, 80 acres of single-family residential to the west that the Tierneys are planning at some point in the future. So, we took that all into consideration for the traffic impact analysis. As an underlying basis, we used the proposed Woodland Crest traffic analysis, traffic generation, as if that project was completely built out. So, we took that project, full build-out, added on the proposed general development plan project that we're talking about tonight, potential future single-family residential, and combined all that together to be able to come up with traffic numbers and a traffic analysis of all of those developments happening and being completed. So, when we look at traffic, we know that development doesn't happen overnight. It takes time. So, what we did is we analyzed the worst-case condition, as if that all happens, even though in reality it's not going to happen for 10, 15, 20 years, to get everything built out in the entire area. And you're talking 80 acres plus. I know Wanakee's growing very quickly, but it takes time just for everything to be implemented. So, that will be a process, but we went for the end game, and then we can scale it back, obviously, for the interim. That was the study area, and the intersections that we studied are the five circles that you can see on the plan. They're existing, for the most part. They all have some level of improvements, with exception to the Lone Silo Lane, County Highway Q, three-quarter intersection. That's a proposed new intersection. All other intersections exist with some leg. And a leg is a section with, a four-legged intersection would be north, south, east, west. So, most of them exist in some fashion. We're just adding to them at the existing location. Holiday and Woodland, we have proposed a two-way stop. Stop on Holiday and a stop on the south road from the development. Woodland will be through access as it is now. That's the way that we modeled it in the proposed condition, and it's at an acceptable level of service. The proposed Sausalito-Woodland access, which is a private access point for Festival Foods, we have a proposed right-in, right-out at that location to control traffic so that we're not backing up and queuing cars with some of the movements in the Woodland and County Highway Q intersection. That, again, will operate at sufficient level of service at that location as well. Sausalito will still be a full intersection. You can go any direction except across into Festival. That's a right-in only for a proposed condition at that location. Woodland and Highway Q will operate as it is now. No proposed improvements at that location other than some signal timing changes, which I'll get into in a few moments here. The proposed Lone Silo Lane and County Highway Q intersection will be a three-quarter intersection. There will be a new left-turn lane on Highway Q for northbound traffic, and a proposed right-turn lane for southbound traffic on County Highway Q. And it will be a right-in, right-out, coming in, in and out of the development as far as that access point, with the three-quarter intersection being the left turn-in from northbound traffic on Highway Q. That location was studied, and again, operates in an acceptable level of service due to the proximity of the other adjacent intersections being signaledized. No issues there. The proposed Peaceful Valley Parkway and Highway Q intersection is mostly existing. There is limited infrastructure on the west leg of that intersection, so there's significant infrastructure proposed. That, too, operates at an acceptable level of service at that location. We are proposing a right-turn lane to come into the development, and proposing three lanes of traffic eastbound coming out so that we have adequate queue lengths from a traffic analysis standpoint. There is some traffic signal improvement and some infrastructure, some transformers and some controls that need to be relocated for the right-turn lane coming into the development. But with exception to that, most of the infrastructure is in place for the traffic impact analysis. As a summary, we feel that County Highway Q was planned well to allow for development on and around the area, and that the majority of the infrastructure in the main legs of Highway Q was planned well to allow for growth in Wanakee. And the summary of our analysis is that at full build-out, all that will be needed from a major infrastructure standpoint is signal timing will have to be adjusted as growth happens. So, we're working with Strand and village staff to, for those recommendations, although they won't be implemented or need to be implemented likely for five, 10, 15 years. There may be interim steps that need to happen, but we're working to get there. And initial year one, year two, you're not going to really see any changes from a traffic standpoint. So, we've been in contact with Strand and the village staff. They've reviewed the traffic analysis and feel comfortable with our conclusions. So, just being open about that. And, you know, with that, we really wrap up the highlights of the project here. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Don and Jerry are here. They're excited about the project. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Just a couple of staff comments. Chris and Brian can elaborate as well. In terms of the recommended approval, it was recommended approval by the planning commission and the joint planning commission. The lot in the GDP, we're recommending that the lot for Lot 1 be restricted to a grocery store, and that Lot Number 3 be restricted to a convenience store. Lot 2 is commercial, but also has a caveat that it could become multifamily in the future after we get through our housing study. The TIA was reviewed by staff and an outside consultant, and Kyle Henderson is here from Strand and Associates, who reviewed the TIA, and I can say he lives on Holiday Drive about two blocks from this proposed development. It's all ahead.
Yeah, the only things that I would add is, we do have some language in, under permitted uses for the Lot 2, acknowledging what Kevin identified. In other words, our comprehensive plan anticipates that Lot 2 could potentially have multifamily developments. At this, we're not willing to rezone property for multifamily purposes, though, until we finish our housing study. But we felt it would be appropriate to put this paragraph in the GDP just to give everyone a heads-up that this may be coming. The document itself is in final form with one exception. We just need to, on Page 1, Section 1, update the acreage that's identified there. The applicant needs to make some changes based on the location of Lone Silo Lane, and so we just need to update the acreage. And there's two other minor changes, not to the text itself, but to actually, that document right there is Attachment A to the GDP. And if you recall, when we did Kilkeny Farms on the east side of Q, we had a number of different lots at the time that we approved the general development plan. I think the only final user that we knew of at that point was Dean. And so, the developer actually put together a pretty detailed grid, like you see on the bottom of this page. We don't think that that grid is really necessary for this GDP, because so much is already known with respect to two of the lots. So, Jason Valerius, our planner, advised that we just take that grid out. And then he has some language that he once added that just says, "This exhibit does not constitute approval of site design details, including the precise location or design of driveways. Site design will be approved at the SIP stage," which is our common practice. And so, he suggested that we add that to Attachment A. So, essentially, the document is in final form, and credit to the applicant for working with staff so that we got something put together for this meeting that is effectively in final form.
Okay, so it's 6:25. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do we have some forms?
I do have two sheets. First one is from Steve Hubacher of 16, or 6124 Woodland Drive, and he wishes to provide written comment. There is a 60-inch culvert under Woodland Drive east of Holiday. I want to make sure that it, that is uncovered and connected to the drainage of Kilkeny West to have overflow water from the retention area north of Woodland to flow south to Doran Creek. That's where his comments, yes.
He also, as he was talking about that, he said the water flows northwest to Woodland. It doesn't. I have really nice videos to show the water flows southwest to Doran Creek. Anytime you get inch and a half, two inches of rain, it all goes southwest to Doran Creek. Nothing goes to it. And that's why I believe that 60-inch culvert was put in 18, 2001, if I remember talking to Kevin back then.
When we had to pour feed water in our basement.
I remember.
Yeah, and that's, there is a 60-inch culvert right there that was supposed to be connected, should that ever get developed. But the next slide or whatever that shows the, where the blue spot, not that one, the next one. You see where the blue is down there, right by the, past the corner of Miller's property? That's exactly where the water goes. It goes right from Holiday, and it goes right down there past the corner of his property, and goes right into Doran Creek. That's the way the water flows. I have nice videos of it.
I think after the public hearing, we can address the comments.
Okay.
Next slip is from...
Thank you for your comments.
Robert McPherson of 1703 Alexandra Court.
So, I appreciate that they're going to wait for the results of the housing study. I guess my question is, the applicant is developing apartments across the street already that are probably going to be market rate. And I understand it's early in the process, but the comment that I've caught in this is that they're waiting for the results, and then they'll decide if they're going to file to put, you know, multifamily housing in there. Could they maybe, I know that we're not really supposed to ask questions, but it would really help from a public perspective if they could provide some color on that because we're conceivably going to have multi-use residential across the street as well. And if we are looking at tackling issues like affordable housing, if we're putting in three market rate apartment complexes all near each other in prime real estate near the high school, I think that that would be of interest to the public to know where it is that they're going with that. Sorry, that was a little rambling, but...
All good. Thank you.
Those are all the slips I had.
Anybody else that would like to make any comments?
Would the speed limit be down to 30?
Can you say your name and stuff, so we know all that?
Pam Hubacher, Woodland Drive. Would the speed limit change as it has at Kilkeny East to go down to Kilkeny West from Q to probably the school? There's lots of school buses, lots of kids riding, so I didn't know if the speed limit would be changed to 30 instead of 35, what it is.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Oh. Would our mailboxes come across our street to our houses now? Because they're on the side of where the Festival Foods is.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. You guys want to address a couple of those things?
It looks like Grant or even Kent were interested in addressing the stormwater. I'd like them to go first and see if I need to follow up.
I can touch on the stormwater, and I apologize if you misinterpret me, but the development does, the development itself, the Tierneys' property drains northwest, and then it heads west and southwest. So, you are correct. I did not mean that the stormwater was going northwest and continuing northwest. It's going northwest, hitting Woodland, and then going back southwest. So, it's not actually crossing Woodland. It's staying on the south side of Woodland. So, there's an existing ridge at this location. In the north quadrant of the property flows this direction. There's then a ditch on the south side of Woodland, which flows west, and then heads back down to the southwest. So, that is the existing direction.
Right, I just, right where that little water retention thing is, you have there. I mean, you literally have a 60-inch culvert within five yards of that. It's right there under Woodland Drive.
Okay. And I know that Kevin and I had a brief conversation as far as the 60-inch and what was happening with that in the future, and I believe that the village addressed some of these drainage issues with some overflows to the north, or, I mean, I don't know exactly what happened, but...
All I can say is, we're committed to looking at it. So, we, I will go back and look at it to make sure if it's, because I remember putting it in now. I'm not sure that we had a good conversation about it. But it's something that, why don't I follow up with the engineers and follow up with you after that?
Okay. We are proposing storm surge. Okay. We are, we are proposing storm sewer as the sidewalk is implemented on the south side of Woodland. There's going to be curb and gutter added as well. So there's going to be storm inlets and storm sewer. So if there, there is a connection to be made, we can easily make that connection and, and get it out, which goes to the west for the, for the flow of stormwater. So Kevin and I will take a look at that and, and make sure that it's addressed.
Okay. Any others?
Just on the housing issue, for this property, we have an annexation agreement. And for the property on the other side of the street that relates to, for our development group, we have an annexation agreement. Same language in each one where there's an acknowledgement that there's not going to be any multifamily housing done until the housing study is completed. And then obviously, once the housing study is completed, the village board will be able to evaluate exactly how it wants to move forward. And so there's, even though for, just using this as an example, the, the comprehensive plan right now identifies Lot Two as potentially having multifamily housing. Exactly what's going to go there and when it goes there is still going to be up to the village board as you move forward. But we haven't really had those discussions on either side of the street right now, based on the language that's in the annexation agreements. And I, I'll, the speed limit issue, I, I think that's something that the chief plandal would, you know, to the extent that it would be changed, he, he would probably need to have input on that.
Mailboxes?
That's something they have to work out with the post office.
I was going to say postal's going to-
We, it's totally up to the post office. The, the post office is making a lot of changes these last few years, so, but to any extent that you can help relocate a mailbox, we certainly will.
Board members, any comments?
Just one question on the zoning, similar to across the street on the C one, we're not going to have any, um, surface parking.
No, we've already removed those from this document and we're in the process of removing them from the documents on the other side of the street.
Cause it says anything else along by C one.
For, for permitted uses, but like, like the, the concerns that you had raised before, those are conditional.
By now, I'd said it enough. They take it out. Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Cool.
When this was presented earlier, I think there was a comment from Fire that said, they'd like that renamed to Holiday Drive instead of-
Yeah, I think we're going to get into that on the next agenda item. So this agenda, the, the public hearing relates to the zoning. Then for new business, we have a discussion on the CSM and we are going to touch on that.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Phil, any questions? Aaron? Gary?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
There's a recommended motion on page thirty-four. Uh, Kevin touched on it, the Plan Commission and Joint Plan Commission, both, um, recommended approval. The, the, the comments that I had regarding the acreages and the Attachment A, I don't think that we need to include those in the motion because they're very minor. We'll still make those administratively, but if you're inclined to approve the GDP, I think the recommended motion on page thirty-four is appropriate.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the GDP as recommended by the Plan Commission and Joint Plan Commission, conditional upon approval of the developer's agreement.
Motion by Phil Holmes, second by Gary Hertzberg, any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed? Ayes have it. Okay, next we've got under new business, discuss and take action on a survey, certified survey map and developer's agreement for Kilkenny Farms West Commercial Center at the southwest corner of Woodland Drive in County Highway Q. Kevin again?
Uh, Grant, I don't know if you had anything more to add. I can plug you back in with the, with the CSM.
Yeah, I, Kevin, I didn't have anything as far as to add as far as the CSM. I think it's just the underlying legal aspect of creating the lots and dedicating the, the public infrastructure required for the project.
If there's any questions, in fact, there's, there's two conditions that staff are recommending to be included with the, with the approval. Uh, or two additional stat, uh, conditions, including the one that was in the packet. One is the addition of RRFB and that's one of the pushpoint activations for the pedestrians at, at Holiday Drive. And then the other is, I had asked the Fire Department, EMS and Police Department regarding the name of the roadway. And I think the consensus from the Protective Services that it should remain or should be South Holiday Drive.
That RF, RRFB, is that across Woodland at Holiday?
At Holiday, right. The other part we need to talk about is the developer's agreement. I'm going to let Brian lead that discussion.
So yeah, for this agenda item, we have, we have two items, but we're, staff is only recommending action on the CSM. Um, with respect to the development agreement, you do have a development agreement that's in your packet, it's on, on page fifty. And it is, um, it is what I would call our standard public improvements development agreement. Because when you look at the development of the CSM, that's really what we're asking, that there's a number of public improvements that they're going to have to put in. So, you know, for example, we've executed a number of development agreements with Mr. Tierney. Um, and that related residential subdivisions. So if you were to look at this development agreement, the language, even though it's for commercial as opposed to residential, the language is, is almost identical. We're not seeking approval of a development agreement tonight. Um, I, I think that the applicants may touch on this, but one of the things that we, we've had discussions with them on is if you go to the east side of County Highway Q, when all the work was done on County Highway Q, the village put a, a trail or bike path on, along County Highway Q from Woodland Drive south to the Parkway, I think. Is that correct? And then there were also improvements that were made at the intersection of Peaceful Valley Parkway and County Highway Q. Had the village had access to the land on the west side of Q, in all likelihood, when those improvements had been made, the village would have made improvements to the west side of the intersection between the Parkway and Woodland Drive, now what would be South Holiday Drive. And also would have put a, a trail system in on the west side. The reason why we didn't do it there was timing. We, we didn't have access to the land or the, or the people who owned the land. And so if we wanted to do the work at that time, it would have cost us more money because we would have had to go acquire the land for the project. We now do have access to the owners of the land. And so one of the requests that was made by the applicants was that money from the TIF be used to make these improvements. And so I think we've had some initial discussions with elders and there's a belief that we can use, uh, the TIF money to make these improvements. Which again, you know, you guys tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, but had, had we been, had we had access to the land when we were doing the improvements on, on this, on the east side of Q, we would have done them on the west side of Q. That's a long way of getting at, we anticipate bringing two agreements to you at your first meeting in June. One of the agreements will be the document that's in your packet right now. That is really just going to be a public improvements agreement that relates to the development of the certified survey map. The second agreement would be an amendment to our existing TIF agreements with, um, the developer to address how this additional work is going to be performed and how the TIF is going to pay for it. But we are, we were not in a position to bring that amended TIF agreement to you tonight. And the, the two agreements are probably going to work together a little bit, and so we felt it best to bring them both back to you in June.
Just a, a little context, if I, Kevin, can I grab the pointer there?
Sure.
Um, with regards to the, the, the TIF district that Brian's referring to, it's the Kilkenny Farms District that actually ends right here. That's the northern limit around the Dean Clinic here is how far north the Kilkenny District comes. In our project plan, we have language that identifies the ability of the district to perform work within a half mile beyond its radius. Now, or a half mile radius beyond its boundary, which is exactly how the district was able to fund the improvements along the east side of Q. So this is essentially completing the corridor north and south with the same mechanism that the existing Kilkenny District offered it early on.
Okay. So what do you need us to do tonight?
Well, tonight, we're, we're asking you to, to approve the certified survey map. And so Kevin, Kevin touched on this earlier, if you go to, I'm going in the wrong direction here. If you go to page fifty of your packet, um, there's a recommended motion, approve the Kilkenny Farm CFM, CSM with authorization for the village attorney to adjust the CSM for changes in the location of the trail system. And subject to any outstanding issues resolved to the satisfaction of the village engineer and village attorney, conditioned upon approval of a developer's agreement being approved by, by the village board. So I think the, the, there were two addition, first of all, you have a, a letter from Kent in, in your packet. And so changes to the certified survey map need to be made based on, on his recommendations. And so Kent's letter is effectively included within that recommended motion. Um, and then I think the two issues that Kevin touched on would also be part of that. That being the RRFB at the, at the Woodland and Holiday intersection, right? And then you have information from, you know, EMS and Fire, et cetera, stating that I think their request is that the portion of the, the road as it goes south from Woodland and meets up at the Parkway would be called South Holiday Drive. And so those two would be also part, those two topics would be part of the motion also.
Okay.
We're not asking you to take action on this particular issue. We wanted to get it in front of you so you had time to, to reflect on it before you asked to take action on it at the next board meeting. In essence, what we're trying to do is, is really flip the infrastructure that's on the east side of the road to the other side of the road with the same really mechanism for financing as, as we did the other side of the road. And so you'll have to make a determination of, you know, if that's, if that's reasonable.
Okay, so can we comment on that then?
Yeah, because we have the developer's agreement on the agenda and it's definitely related to the developer's agreement, so you can provide feedback on that tonight, certainly.
So I've been consistent for the last, well, since I came onto the board about sidewalks and, and having things on both sides of the road. This particular is our highway coming in with a higher speed. Since I was just in Washington DC, I had a lot of opportunity to have roads like this. There were none that didn't have it on both sides. So I'm in favor of making sure we get that corridor done, especially in the commercial area there, on that side of the street. That, that's just a comment I have in regards to this.
I was driving tonight on Mill Road and a lady, instead of being on the pedestrian path, was walking on the other side with a stroller and like a three-year-old down the bike path into traffic. So I would support putting the sidewalk in also.
As far as, that, that's just my comments. If you guys have comments about that, great. Otherwise, we'd look for, any other comments you have about the CSM or a motion?
We're going to do the same thing on the east side of the road?
We've already done that.
We've got that there.
Well, we haven't. From Peaceful Valley to Woodland, we haven't.
No, we want to finish that as well.
Okay.
Oh, is there a crack in the trail?
Yeah, there's, there's a missing leg, what Phil's talking about. Uh, so there, as far as the, the other side of the street is part of that development, they'll bring this, the, the trail up to the edge of where those existing houses are.
Right here.
Then it's our, our plan then to can, to make that completion, probably was part of this project along with that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
It's good. I think it improves our accessibility, which is important. I agree.
Okay, so we look for a motion then for the CSM. Everybody, everybody's inclined to do so.
I'll read it. Make a recommended motion, we approve the Kilkenny Farm CSM with authorization for the village engineer to adjust the CSM for changes in the location of the trail system. And subject to any outstanding issues resolved to the satisfaction of the village engineer and village attorney, conditioned upon approval of a developer's agreement being approved by the village board.
Okay, motion by Phil Holmes? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Okay, uh, any other comments? Susan?
I think I forgot to mention, relative to the housing multifamily issue, I don't think that a developer could tell you exactly what they're going to do yet because they don't know when it's going to be built and the market changes every single year. And once we get that study, even if it does recommend some affordability, whether that's the best location, I don't know. And if it is, you've got to get somebody who can get tax credits. If they can't get tax credits, you won't be able to provide the affordability. And not, there's only so many tax credit projects or other forms of financing. But they're not easy to put together. So we'll just have to kind of wait and see.
I was clarified, this includes the change to South Holiday? Right, okay.
That's what the, the motion includes that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed? Ayes have it. Next under new business, we have discuss and take action on developer's agreement and final plat of Golden Pond's addition to Westbridge.
So in your packet is the final plat that was recommended by the Plan Commission, this is not in the joint planning, so it's only our Plan Commission. Recommended approval of the final plat. And also included was a developer's agreement which was drafted, um, I can't remember who drafted.
I, I drafted. It's, it's our standard residential public improvements development agreement. The, the one, the one issue that is new to this and, and, uh, is the, the United States, uh, post office is now requiring for subdivisions that mailboxes not be at homes, but rather on, you know, clustered. And so this is the first time that we have a development that's relating to that issue. And so we do have language in here that provides some flexibility on what's going to happen. But there, there, if you look at the plat, there is an outlot within the plat, Outlot Five, where these clustered mailboxes are going to be. And, um, so we, we, this is the first agreement that we have that touches on that topic. It's not a choice that we made and it's not a choice I believe that the developer has made. It's a, it's something that is being imposed upon us by the, by the post office.
Okay.
And, and the only thing, other thing I would add is that we are going to likely be bringing back to you, uh, wetlands maintenance agreements um, at some point in time in the future related to this, but I, I do believe that you can move forward with action on the development agreement and, and we'll just bring that to you in the future.
So we have pictures. Do we have, I mean, I'm, I'm not familiar with what the postal, postal service is doing. The pictures that are provided in here, are those options that the postal service provided?
No, what, what, those were, those are there simply as examples of what they potentially could look like. We, they don't have to look like that. We, but we thought it would be appropriate and the developer had provided to us examples of clustered mailboxes, I think outside the state maybe. Um, but it, it is something, this is, this is the first time that we're working through this. And so the development agreement does give some flexibility for future plans to be approved by Kevin because, you know, we, we didn't want to, um, you know, have this, we don't have this planned out just yet. And yet the development does need to go forward and it's just something that we're going to have to work through, but it does give an example of what they could look like.
Okay, so with regards, my only concern is that these, as we get new subdivisions, whatever the postal service is requiring, whatever the minimum is, I don't really want us to go to the minimum. I want these to be something that fit the subdivision and don't take away from the subdivision.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we're capable to do something like that. I just think that's important, that we don't have an eyesore for any of our subdivisions potentially.
Jerry's going.
Could I comment on that a little bit?
Sure.
We've been working with the post office and they got a tough job locally because they're, they're taking orders from somewhere else. And Matt Schreiner from Beerback here, Beerback, we've been working with him and our surveyor. And what we've done is we've created a lot that we know will be plenty big. It'll be bigger than what it probably necessary to handle it. And we've been working on options, maybe making a, a drive-in building for the, for the mail people and different things. We're going to work through it and we want to make, um, subset of that isn't just to meet the minimum standards by, by. But it'd be much appreciated if we could have the flexibility to work with, with the post office, village and, you know, everybody if it happens.
I'm aware of this and I actually had some conversations. And being the head of our HOA in our neighborhood, I assume you're going to have to make this part of an HOA responsibility because obviously the village isn't going to take care of these. So the cost of a structure, the maintenance of it, and then the ability to enforce, Mike Lawton, as you know, the law, that all this stuff gets taken care of is a major concern I have. It's not the developer's fault. I don't, and I know that the post office has done this in some, some other areas. I don't know where successfully in our climate, given, you know, the weather's bad more than half the year and you can have people who are disabled and elderly who need to get down here. So who's going to keep it shove, shoveled all day long so when you go down to your mailbox, you can actually get in? I know my snowplow only comes once a day. And so, I mean, it's fraught with lots of issues, operational issues ultimately. It's not their fault. This is going to be really interesting to see how this works out. Public needs to pay attention and maybe be contacting the post office about, really? Single family homes is a lot different than putting it in a cluster in an apartment building or a condo building that's enclosed.
We bought this.
I still don't know how, how it's going to work.
And so the, the development agreement touches on both of the issues that you have raised. I just, the, the, there's one sentence that says the developer shall construct a facility for mail and parcel delivery on Outlot Five pursuant to the plans approved by the village engineer. So it's still got to come back to Kevin to get approved.
I realize that. I'm just...
And then we have, we do have language in here. There would be a homeowners association that would be created that would be responsible for maintaining it. We also have language in the agreement that, you know, we've, that says, look, if a homeowners association isn't doing this, the village would have the right to go on to the outlot and, and fix it up if it's fallen into disrepair. And then we would have the authority to charge, a special charge to all of the...
Assess the homeowners.
Yeah, now, granted, we don't want to get involved, but we felt like we needed to put that lang, and that's, the language that's in this document is in other agreements where we've had similar situations where we, we're not responsible for maintaining it, but if we do have to go on to the property and do it, there is a mechanism for us to get paid back. But I do agree that it's going to be something that the homeowners association...
Because the HOA can't necessarily always collect from people. There's always people who don't want to pay even $25.
There are changes we're going to make, mostly because of this, because for the first time ever, we're going to have people pay a small, but pay an HOAP from the get-go. You know, so they're more used to paying something.
Okay. So, any other comments, or we'd look for a motion?
Just throw one other quick. Kevin, I, I just emailed you a photo, if you could pull this up. I shared with Jerry too. I don't know if, if, if you guys have some sort of mainline, mainline to like Kevin or something, but Golden Pond is definitely the right name for the development, because I drove by checking, Robert is like, Todd, where are you going with this? I drove by to check out the new shelter out there in Meadowbrook, and drove into the park, and caught something I'd never seen in Wanaquie before, which is, if you zoom in, that's a loon sitting there in the pond right where the development's going to be. And if you, if you can appreciate the Golden Pond reference to the movie, that makes all the sense in the world. So, good job, Don.
All ready then? Okay. Thank you for sharing your visual comment.
Color commentary.
I'd make a motion to approve the final plat and developers' agreement for Golden Pond, subject to any changes by the village engineer and village attorney.
Can we have a motion by Gary Hertzberg?
I'll second it, but from here, it looks like the Loch Ness Monster.
Well, since Phil added, I'm going to give him a second. That's okay. And our Beerbacher?
Beerbacher.
Beerbacher? I'm just going to say again, we're going to be good with water over here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Ayes have it. Third item we have is discuss and take action on fitness center membership policy. Who's taking this one? Adam?
I will. So for a number of years now, staff has lightly, I think, discussed the concept of offering complimentary membership to our village center, fitness center. And that conversation has been very good, been very helpful, but hasn't necessarily led to any kind of policy development or something like that. And looking at it from a staff perspective or an HR perspective, you know, you think of cost contain, cost containment for health insurance, you think of the ability to recruit and retain employees, and especially when you run the numbers, there's not really too much there from a financial exposure. And so when Chris came up to us and asked us to maybe put together a policy to present to the board, we were enthusiastic. I'm enthusiastic about that opportunity, primarily for, for a number of reasons. Things that we see in the market, folks coming in wanting some different types of experiences from their workplace. This is an option for them. When we talk about the HSA and the healthcare savings component, a way for them to keep costs down from our employee standpoint is for them to have an opportunity to exercise and to encourage them to do that. That hopefully saves them money on their HSA, but it also benefits us because we're hopefully spending less money on their health insurance. And so from numerous, and then the financial component, it not being an expensive endeavor. So it's something we, I support. I think it makes a lot of sense for our team. I think it promotes organizational culture. So what you have in front of you now is that policy. It allows regular full-time and regular part-time staff access to our fitness center. It, it doesn't allow them access to anything beyond that from a, from a free standpoint. But I've worked with Sue, and I want to thank Sue for her help and her support with this. Todd and others, I think it's a good win-win for our team. So stand for any questions.
Are, are police included in this?
Yes. Yep, and utilities.
So, so I, I looked at a couple things when I brought this up to Adam. We talked about this almost when the village center was opened. I think we started discussing it. And at first I was, hmm, no, I didn't, I didn't like it. I was concerned about the usage of our village center, that it would be, if we're bringing our, our staff in there, that maybe it was going to impact the residents, and there wouldn't be machines available. And I asked Sue and Adam, and they assured me that that would not be the case. I think it's a good thing from a wellness standpoint. I work with companies on a regular basis. I work with other municipals in my, in my real-world job, and wellness is, is a huge, huge thing for their employees, recruiting them, retaining them. Some are offering dollars for memberships at, at health clubs. I look at this as it's not costing us any new dollars. Our equipment is not overly used as far as it would, it would take away from the other customers that are there. And I just think it's a, it's, our school district is doing the same thing right now with their facility that they just built, where the staff and maintenance have opportunity to use that in, in the new school. So that's where I'm coming from. Comments? Susan?
I think it's a good policy. My, my concern is capacity, because I go there a lot, and it's getting crowded. And how many employees are we talking about total?
Probably regular part-time and regular full-time, probably...
Utility, police, buildings.
Yeah, probably somewhere between ninety and a hundred people.
Only ninety to a hundred?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it wouldn't be available to seasonals. Like, it wouldn't be available to folks who are working at our baseball field. It wouldn't be available to folks like, like...
Probably more people.
No, not, that's about roughly.
I guess what I don't want to see is that we find out, we need a proposal to expand the community center or build a new facility because all of a sudden we don't have enough space. Because it's a great, I love it. I'm there as often as I can get there. To me, I do, I have seen a huge increase. I thi, at least I think so, but I'm not there all day, so I don't know for sure. So that's just my only concern.
Yeah, I defer to Sue's judgment on that, for knowing that.
So no budget requests, Susan?
There's no more room to do that.
There's not more room.
Actually, the other one was, and Adam pointed it out, was the membership is, is one thing, but all the classes, if they want to take classes, they have to pay just like anyone else would have to pay.
For the class, so they still pay for it. And that's probably a good revenue maker.
You know, the other thing, Chris, when you're out there working out and you start talking to somebody, if they make a conversation, I think it's a good place for the public to maybe meet some of the employees. They get some opportunity to, to talk, oh, you work for utilities, what do you do for them? I think it's just a, a good way to interact within the public. So I would, I would support this.
Phil? I had no time to think about that, this, this afternoon, and I was thinking, you know, we have a fitness center for employees of the school district, and some of the employees of the school district buy membership in our village gym. I, probably ten, fifteen percent of the people are going to use it, right? But it's a nice thing to offer. So I have nothing against it.
I think it's a great thing to offer, and the one at the school, at the intermediate school is really nice. And when we practice in there, I see people in and out of there all the time, and I think it's cool that we could offer the same.
Phil? I know there's no additional money being asked for here. Do you have a feel for how many are already members that will be converted to now free?
Yeah. I think the numbers were eleven. Yeah. So eleven total folks who use it right now, who would be free.
Do we know what that equates to, number of, dollar-wise?
Do you remember?
Over the year. I, I don't think it's huge, but...
Probably.
Couple thousand?
Yeah.
At, at the most, it would be that.
One, one counter, the flip of the coin there is employees who now may be interested in joining, but then upgrading to family membership.
Sure.
I know there's at least, I for one, and I'm sure others will do the same. You're probably going to see a, a reasonable offset in that regard.
So that's an extra, that is a cost to a family.
But that would be an ancillary benefit, not something I would say we would be intending to necessarily happen, have happened. But you could imagine folks bringing their families over and paying the family rate minus their individual cost as well, so.
I know when we first started talking about the fitness center, it was somewhat controversial because there were some private ones being proposed in competition with the private sector. And, you know, I know that my health insurance lets me, they, they give me a rebate, and I can join anywhere. And we may, as we grow, need to consider that as well as an option, just because there may be so many people, hopefully, who want to be well.
Yeah, and Quartz does offer us a point system, where you accumulate enough points and you can see some rebates. It's not just working out that gives you that opportunity.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to encourage, you know, support for the local businesses here as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the fitness center membership policy as presented.
Second.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg, second by Erin Moran. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by those of her to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I was worried everybody wanted to stay. Second by Erin Moran. Call, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Ayes have it. Thank you.